Okay, let's call this meeting to order of the Bellingham City Council for September 22nd, 2014. There will be a public hearing on Monday, October 13th at 7:00 for consideration of a request to docket amendments to the Samish Neighborhood Plan for a rezone at 801 Samish Way. There will also be a public hearing on the rental safety program on Monday, October 27th at 7:00 PM. I believe that's here in council chambers. Okay? Heads nodding. And, Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) (inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Terry Bornhaman?
Here.
Gene Knutson?
Here.
Kathy Lehman?
Here.
Michael Olaquist?
Here.
Roxanne Murphy?
Here.
Jack Weiss?
Here.
Pinky Vargas is excused. Okay, we're gonna go into our 15-minute public comment period. We have no public hearings this evening, so you're free to speak on any subject you choose to address the council. You have three minutes. Please introduce yourself and speak up to three minutes. We have a timer, so you'll get a beep when you're done. And the first one up is, uh, well, I don't see a name, or Behem? Is that Beham? B-H-M?
I think it's...
Oh.
...from Beham.
Oh, okay. And then Judy Collins, and then Bob Kooat.
Hello.
All right. And Bob, it looks like you signed up three times here. You can only speak on one, you can only speak once at a public hearing, but you can speak on all three subjects if you can fit 'em in three minutes, so go for it.
(inaudible).
Okay. Perfect.
As you can probably guess, I'm opposed to the rental licensing program, your ordinance. There are those in the mayor's office and within city council that have been pushing this rental ordinance. Now, I need to go back a couple weeks to some remarks that I made, and a couple people apparently were upset because they thought they were disparaging of Western Washington University students. Exactly the opposite. It was tongue-in-cheek. I am not the one who is suggesting the students can't direct their own lives. It's those pushing this ordinance. They are the ones that are suggesting that the students can't comprehend rental agreements. So, it's not me. Those pushing the ordinance are the ones that don't believe the students can do it themselves. I've been living here 40 years in Bellingham, and for 40 years, this type of thing has been on the menu. And what it really boils down to is, all these years, there are those that would like to figure out a handy way to control Western students that live off-campus. Why not be honest and just state it for what it is? Now, when you come down to your ordinance, I've read all the ordinances in all the communities in the state of Washington that have been passed. I don't know if you all have, but I have. And guess what? There are only two things in those ordinances that are similar, and that is the Landlord Tenure Act and billing codes, because those two things are how you enforce what you supposedly want. But it's already there. So, it's just a matter of spinning wheels and giving control to somebody within the city government. Doesn't have anything to do with protecting the renters. Besides, there are thousands of people in Bellingham that don't go to Western that rent, and nobody seems to have talked to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Judy Collins.
Hi, I'm Judy Collins, on the 210 Horton Road. How are you guys? I was raised on the Horton Road. We never had indoor plumbing, never had water. All the time I was growing up there, in the 50s and 60s, I hate to put numbers on it. But here we are in 2014, and I still don't have any water. So, if any of you guys have any ideas on how I can get some water, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Bob Kooat?
Kenote.
Kenote.
The other evening, there was a meeting here, and they showed a website that had been developed for you people, for the city. It was a really beautifully done job. It was done, I guess, all in-house. Today, I note in the paper that you're proposing to pay, pay out $140,000 for another website. If you take a look at that website that your own people did here, there'd be no reason to go outside and get another website. It's perfect. It had everything that was mentioned. So, that's, that's one. The second one was, in the paper a while back, it indicated that you were interested in putting up some money so that people could learn how to make videos, so that they could then put them on the local TV channel. It seems to me that there's something wrong there. What you apparently wanted to do, or proposing to do, is taught at the high schools, it's taught at the community colleges, and it's taught at Western Washington University. I just don't understand why you want to spend money and do something that they are already doing. So, I'd like you to consider that along the line. The last thing has to do with the proposed increase in the parking. It was strange, the article indicated that it was costing us something like $19 and change to process something to get a $20 fine. My first question is, who's doing something wrong? How are other cities doing it? Are our parking fees in line with what other places are? And if they're not, then I would not object to raising ours. But it just seems strange that it was costing us that amount of money to make the collections. That's, okay, one last one. I still have a minute. Well, I'm not doing too, not doing too badly, right? Okay. Yeah, there was an article a while back about making Bellingham more bicycle-friendly. I have a bike. I'm old, but I still, it's a recumbent, and I still ride it. I, I asked at a meeting a while back, because coming here to the meeting a few days ago, I watched two Western Washington students, I have nothing against Western Washington, I taught there, okay? Cutting through a parking lot, a gas station, against the traffic. A while back, I was walking along Cornwell, and two boys, about 14-years-old, came, came down the side where the municipal building is there, and screaming and yelling, jumped off the curb, against the light, crossed through the traffic while it was coming. Two policemen there on bicycles. So, I went over to them, I said, "Did you see that?" "What?" I, I said, "What can we do?" He said, "Nothing, they're allowed to ride on the sidewalk." Where is the posting of what the rules are for riding when we have paid, we put in bike lanes? Okay? I'd like to see where the rulings are posted for bicycle ma, I'm not against bicycles.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Pam Borso. And if there's anyone else who would like to speak, please do come down now and get in line.
Good evening, my name is Pam Borso. I'm president of the local chapter of the North Cascades Audubon Society, and I'm here to talk tonight about Scudder Pond, and I'm here to thank you, on behalf of the board, for taking over the stewardship of Scudder Pond. It's a very special piece of property for us, and we think that the city of Bellingham is uniquely, you know, in a better position to, in terms of resources and expertise to manage this property for us, to preserve the conservation values and the quality of the Lake Watcom watershed. So, we just want to thank you for accepting our donation.
That's very nice. Thank you, Pam. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment period, and we'll move into our first presentation of the evening, which is a presentation by the Washington State Department of Ecology to the city of Bellingham for, this is exciting, the wastewater treatment plant's outstanding performance in 2013. And actually, it is exciting.
Thank you.
And you'll see why.
Thank you, Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. Yeah, we actually are very excited about this. It is the Outstanding Performance Award for 2013. And just briefly, before I turn it over to Doug Allen and, and Mr. Henderson from the Department of Ecology, one thing that I did want to point out is, this is the fourth consecutive year that the city has won this award. It takes a lot of effort from folks throughout the city to make this happen. Several of them are here today, including Eric Johnston, Assistant Director, that oversees both the water plant, wastewater plant, Bob Bandera, who's our superintendent, that oversees the operations of those plants, and of course Larry Bateman, who is our chief operator and makes everything happen down at Post Point. But as you know, the last couple of years, we've also been completing a major set of improvements to Post Point, so the plant has been under construction, which makes everything that much more challenging to operate a plant that has to operate 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, while you have a bunch of construction going on, making cutovers, trying to get a new plant online. And I think that speaks to the efforts of not only our contractor, but our staff that made that happen, and obviously, along with our partnership with the Department of Ecology. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Doug, and he's got a presentation, and thank you very much.
Thanks. I'll be really short, but that was a really good summary, Ted, I appreciate that. So, as Ted said, this is the fourth year in a row, and that means you've gotta, you've gotta get a hit. If you look at it like it's a baseball analogy, you gotta get a hit every day. And you gotta do that for 365 days, and you gotta do that four years in a row, and it's, it's like batting a thousand, so you can consider yourselves the Ted Williams of the wastewater treatment plant world. In 1995, we had, it was the first year of the program, we had 14 winners. In 1995, or I'm sorry, last year, there were 102, and this year, out of 330 plants statewide, maybe a few more, there were 126. So, we're getting better statewide, but it's still, this is still exceptional, and so we really appreciate this, this work that you've done. It's great to see Bob going out on a winning streak, and I appreciate all the work that, that you all have done. So, without further ado, I'd like to award this Outstanding Performance Award for 2013 to, sorry, to Larry.
Bateman.
Yeah, Larry Bateman. So, after that, I'm gonna turn this over to Mark, 'cause he's got something a little more.
This is the award of the state council, and in Watcom, in Watcom County, I give my own award, and I give the Golden Plunger Award to operators. And Larry's familiar with this, he's, he's got a couple now. To, to make the baseball analogy again, this is like winning, having a thousand games back-to-back, because a baseball season is only half a year, and these guys do it all year long. So, it's like back-to-back, batting a thousand, so it's really incredible. And like, as you said, Ted, to do that during major construction, when the whole plant is being basically given open-heart surgery and rerouted all over the place, it's pretty incredible. So, I want to give you yet another golden pleasure, and Bob, you gotta have a golden pleasure before you leave.
(inaudible). Yeah. Turn around.
Go Cardinals.
Come on around.
I'm tired of you. Yes, with. I chose 12.
What? Bob, what are we gonna do?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Larry, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you very, very much.
Got a good career.
Okay, well, it's awfully hard to follow a Golden Plunger Award, but I've, I'm gonna have to, I guess. Okay, next up, this afternoon, we had a closed-record hearing, and I was flying in, so I wasn't here, so I think I'm gonna turn it over to you, Terry, to report out on that, if that's okay.
Yes, we had a, uh, just a minute now, I'm not ready.
Let me look, too, because I have...
This afternoon, we had...
Here's the record of it.
Okay. Consideration of a site-specific rezone of the eastern 10 acres of Area 1 Meridian Neighborhood to allow the city's planned industrial uses. The applicant had proposed a site-specific rezone in the eastern 10 acres of Area 1 Meridian Neighborhood to allow city's planned industrial uses, including retail, commercial uses. The range of permitted uses within the Area 1 are currently restricted to Watcom County light, impact industrial uses as of the date of the annexation. As proposed, these 10 acres would be placed in a new zoning area, Area 1A in the Meridian Neighborhood. The review process for this type of application includes a closed-record public hearing before the city council prior to a final decision, which we held this afternoon. Council's decision was based on the record created on the August 7th, 2014 public hearing before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission had voted 7-0 to recommend the city council approve the ordinance. This afternoon, the council moved that the ordinance be brought forward for first and second on a unanimous, on a unanimous vote, and I so move.
Second.
Peter, am I missing something?
No, Councilman Bornhaman, that was a fine description. I just want to, since this is unique, one thing that's a little bit different about this is your vote in the afternoon was an actual adoption of those findings of fact.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And so, you, that vote was final, that was, that was the hearing, and then, but you do have then to vote on the first and second reading of the ordinance tonight.
Yeah. Okay, so that, we're doing that right now, right? On the first and second, so...
Yeah.
And Terry? Yeah. The findings-of-fact vote was four to one. Was four to one, that's right, I'm sorry. And the first and second? Yeah, I, thank you, I didn't read, I was thinking. So, we have, so I so move that, the first and second on this ordinance.
Second.
We have a, yes, we have a second on that. Any? Yep.
This is an unusual proceeding, as we've already noted, it's a closed-record hearing, which means if there are new issues that someone may want to consider, they can't actually be taken up. For me, there was a couple of significant issues that were not discussed by the Planning Commission, which left out my mind and left me unable to decide whether or not this was a, a good idea or not, and so that's why I voted no on the findings, and that's why I'll be voting no on doubting this ordinance.
So, Kathy?
I was on an airplane and wasn't here for the closed-record hearing, so I'm going to abstain from voting this evening.
Okay. Any other comments on that? All those in favor of the ordinance, answer aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Extension?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1-1.
4-1-1.
And I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very, very much. Moving into...
Oh, wait a minute, yeah, that's right. Never mind.
Council's standing committee meetings will report out from the afternoon, and the first committee meeting this afternoon was Public Works Public Safety, or this morning, with Terry Bornhaman Chair.
Yes, I had a busy day today. Yes, we had four items before us today. The first was a request for variance to allow nighttime construction on Aldridge Road to minimize disruption to Cordada Elementary School. The developer of West Cordada Green is proposing to install a stormwater conveyance pipe in Aldridge Road. Due to the location of the pipe in the roadway, it will be difficult to keep the roadway open for traffic during construction. To avoid conflict with Cordada Elementary School, which is currently in session, the applicant is requesting the variance to work several nights in early October. Bellingham Municipal Code 10.24.120 prohibits constructions between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM unless council grants a variance upon the finding that it is either necessary or in the public interest for all, or a portion of the work to be performed during these hours. Staff recommended approval of the variance, subject to the condition that the developer provide adequate notice to surrounding properties. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes 5-1 with Vargas absent.
Okay. This afternoon, we took things a little bit out of order, as we then went to try to get through the bicycle master plan, and we worked partway through it. We worked quite a while until, as long as we could, and still get to the other issues, but we still have issues to go. We were looking at setting over a special session, but like, the committee thinks we can finish it with one more work session, so I'm gonna hold them to it. So, we're gonna set this over to, for one more work session, and we should be able to then bring it back to council. But we're still working through those issues.
Excellent.
The other, next issue that we had was an ordinance, proposed ordinance amending Title 11 of the Bellingham Municipal Code related to parking. City of Bellingham Transportation Commission and staff has developed a number of proposed amendments to Title 11 of the Bellingham Municipal Code relating to parking. The changes are intended to increase the clarity, efficiency, and efficiency of the city's parking regulations, and to encourage transportation mode shift away from single occupancy, vehicle trips, and towards alternative forms of transportation. The proposed amendments include increasing the maximum time limits for on-street parking to 72 hours, enhancing the city's existing scaffold parking programs, increasing parking fines, deleting authority, delegating authority to the city's traffic engineer to establish parking time limits in targeted areas, and adopting other administrative changes. The attached staff report further detailed the recommended code amendments and the reasons, reasoning behind them. We got through part of this today, but we ran out of time, given our session, so we decided that we would set this over to our next session for, to get more information, as we'd asked for more information on some of the issues, and hopefully, we'll be able to bring it back at that time, so...
Great, thank you.
And the last issue that we had, I believe, was the last issue? Yeah. The last issue was the Water Use Efficiency Program Plan. The Washington Department of Health requires municipal water suppliers to adopt goals and measures every six years as part of their Water Use Efficiency Program, WAC 246-290. The city's next program period is 2014 to 2019. Staff provided a summary of the 2008-2013 Water Use Efficiency Program, and presented the proposed goals and measures for 2014 and 2019 in accordance with the Appal State Laws and Regulation, and Regulation. Staff was requesting the city council schedule a public hearing to allow comment on the proposed 2014 and 2019 plan. The committee recommended that we, we set up a public hearing, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0 with Councilmember Vargas absent.
And with the public hearing, we asked that staff work with Marie to establish the time when we can have the public hearing. And the committee reports.
Great, thank you very much, Terry. Next up was Lake Watcom Reservoir and Natural Resources Committee, and Pinky Vargas is absent, and I heard Terry Bornhaman chaired.
Why don't you just get out of there and let him run the whole thing?
I know, I know. She's going to, unfortunately.
I didn't mean it that way.
Yeah, yeah, see how you are.
I can take it. Keep it coming.
Okay, yeah, today was, was a report from the September 15th, 2014 Lake Watcom Policy Group Meeting. The Lake Watcom Policy Group consisting of representatives from the Lake Watcom Water, from Lake Watcom Water and Sewer District, Watcom County Council, Southern Valley Community Association, and the Bellingham City Council meets regularly to discuss policy issues regarding Lake Watcom. The Lake Watcom and Natural Resource Committee, well, the chair wasn't here, but we had staff provide a briefing on the discussion and recommendations from the September 15th, 2014 Policy Group Meeting. This was for information only.
Okay.
End of report.
Great, thank you very much, Terry. Okay, moving into committee of the whole, I came in during the first item, which was a capital facilities discussion. It was for information only. We were talking about improvements needed for the federal building and the Parkade Parking Facility in downtown Bellingham. Is there anything, any council members would like to highlight about that presentation? Okay, seeing none. Next item was a presentation about connecting with our schools, from staff from the Bellingham Public Library, which was very engaging, and I really enjoyed. And then, we had a discussion and a resolution about establishing the appointment process to fill the vacancy in the Third Ward Councilmember position, which I left the dais and went and sat down for, because it's for my seat, but I guess I can chair the recommendation, if everyone's okay with that.
Yes.
Okay. So, we had a resolution, and there was some discussion about how to tweak this to be exactly what the council wants it to be, some discussion about when my resignation should be effective at the end of the year, so that the council has adequate and responsible time to appoint a new member, so that they can come in prepared and ready to start in 2015. And so, Peter Raffado made some changes to this resolution based on our discussion, and Peter, do you want to take us through those?
Yeah, based on the motion earlier, the changes made to the draft resolution, just for the record, the first whereas clause, it will be inserted into the blank line at the conclusion of the council's December 15, 2014 meeting, so that it's clear that the intent, your intention is to resign your office effective at the conclusion of that meeting. And then, the next whereas clause inserted into the blank line is that, at the time of her resignation, so that's the point at which the resignation is effective. And then, moving on to the body of the resolution, we inserted, I inserted December 17, 2014, as the motion indicated earlier this afternoon. And then, since we won't have two separate meetings, number five will read, following the executive session, the council will vote to appoint the interim councilmember. Any councilmember may nominate a candidate, and nominations do not require a second. So, that's the total of the changes made. And the other thing I would ask is, in the agenda bill, I was hoping to get a motion, just approving that application form as well, so two motions would be helpful.
Okay, great, thank you, Peter. Michael, and then Terry?
I will pass the resolution as amended.
Is your mic... Is your mic on?
Sorry, no, it wasn't. I move passage of the resolution as amended and read into the record.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Jean?
This is something I never do, but on, 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 on the second page, number six, it says, "And there will be not vote taken on remaining candidates." Is that supposed to say, "And there will be no vote taken on the remaining candidate?" Again, I never do this, I don't know why I'm doing it now.
So don't let anyone say that Jean doesn't read this material.
I never do that.
Nitpicker Knutson.
Here I'm going.
Good catch.
Good one.
Hey, no one can accuse you of sleeping over there, Jean.
Well, English wasn't my favorite language either.
I really want to know what was.
French was good.
Okay. And again, just to clarify, that my intention is to then resign at the conclusion of council's December 15 meeting, but making it very clear that I would like that to be, that I will only do that if the, if our business is concluded and a budget has been voted on.
That's correct.
And that we all understand that.
We all understand.
Yes, okay, awesome. Okay, so as amended, we have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And I abstain, so the resolution passes, oh boy, 5, 0, 1.
5-0-2.
5-0-1-1.
5-1-1, no, 5-0-1.
5-0-1-1.
With one absence.
One absence.
Stop confusing things.
We're going to make a ref on you all the way through here.
Now, now we have a second, we need a second motion to approve the, the application form in the packet.
And I would move that we approve the application that's in the packet.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, application form passes 5-0 with myself abstaining, and Pinky Vargas absent. Okay, excellent, thank you. We had two further items in committee at the whole this afternoon. The, the fourth was a presentation on the Community Health Improvement Plan. We had staff here from Chuckanut Health Foundation, yes, Susan Sharp, and also Maury Ingram from Watcom Community Foundation, and Peter Tyson from United Way of Watcom County. And then our fifth item was the Army Street Project informational briefing, where we got kind of a full report out from Jim Long and the consultant that he worked with the last few months this year on feasibility of the Army Street Project location in downtown Bellingham that the PDA has been working on for quite a while. Some of the information was disappointing, it was a lot of good information that we need, however. Anyone else want to add anything about the PDA presentation? I guess I should clarify, disappointing in the sense that the feasibility of the project as, the, the idea originated and studied, the feasibility of it is not there, and that was clear from the report. Mayor Kelly, oh, Michael?
I'm just wondering if there's a motion needed because there's a memorandum of agreement, and it appears to have a place of yes, we want to continue, and no, we don't. Do we need to take an action, or is this just information at this point?
I believe the item said information only.
It did say information only.
I don't think we have to vote on it.
Okay. I'm sure there'll be some item someday where we take some action, but this was not that time. Okay, we have some minutes to approve. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Kelly's still.
She's trying to break a record.
She might. Michael asked a question during the afternoon meeting that I'd like to respond to, and so there will be more information about options for that, the continuation of projects and that kind of thing, and it's been developed, but it'll probably be part of the budget process.
Okay, and we're going to talk about that in the mayor's report, the budget process.
We are.
We're almost there.
Yeah. The first thing, why don't we, we'll get the reappointment.
Are you, are you going into it? We're not quite there.
So I'm rushing faster than you.
Okay, we're going to approve some minutes and take older new business and report out from executive session, and then we'll be there. I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes from September 8 of 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of these minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes pass 6-0 with Councilmember Vargas absent. Is there any older new business for this evening? Councilmember Murphy?
Well, I just wanted to report out that for the next meeting, I'll be drafting a proposal to replace Columbus Day with Coast Salish Day. And so this is with the intent of recognizing all the cultures that have gone through so many negative things relating to colonization. And so if the council decides to go forward with this, then in future, Columbus Coast Salish Days, I hope it will be called, we can do different kinds of celebrations for all the future October 13ths. But just a notification, this is something that the council will be considering, and I hope the community will let us know what they think about it.
That's great, thank you, Roxanne. Mr. Lilikwist?
I have a bit of good news. It has to do with our downtown. In particular, the Downtown Bellingham Partnership has been seeking 501(c)(3) status. The reason it's important is as a critical step in them qualifying for the state's Main Street Program. The Main Street Program would allow local businesses who want to support the partnership to contribute to the partnership and actually receive a tax credit towards their business tax. So it would reduce, it would allow them to divert more of their money to the partnership and help with their taxes. And just today, the partnership did receive its 501(c)(3) status, and hopefully the next few months, they'll be moving forward to that, becoming qualified for the Main Street Program, and the administration has been very supportive of efforts because it'll, it'll acquire some city help as well.
That's great, thank you, Michael. I just want to jump on that real fast, that there have been a lot of people in this community have worked with the Downtown Bellingham Partnership over the years, and before it was the partnership, it was the Downtown Renaissance Network. And at some point, the Renaissance Network realized we've had some kind of Renaissance downtown, so we should change our name. And there have been a lot of iterations of work gone into this group, and many years of discussion about this 501(c)(3) status, and a lot of discussion of the barriers to receiving it because of the unique work that the organization does. So that's really good news, thank you. Jean?
Last Tuesday, Mayor Kelly and I welcomed the Shangju City Council here in council chambers, along with their finance and economic committees. We had a nice little gathering, but they did put us on notice that it is our turn to return the favor, and the president of the city council was, he was more than stern, he was really upset. He looked at me, he says, "You will come." So I'm telling the council, in 2016, we're going to Shangju, South Korea, so we've, we've really got to figure out how to do that, we've got time, but they're so gracious when they come over here, and the mayor took them out to dinner and everything, and, but it's, it's our turn to return the favor, so.
That's cool.
Anyway, that's, that's a challenge.
Yeah, Terry just retired, he's gone.
I'm gone.
Is that where the fans came from? I think so.
There we go.
We'll figure it out.
Any other older new business? Mayor Kelly?
If you don't mind, I think I'll do the budget.
Okay.
Under new business.
Great, because we brought it up this afternoon, none of that, yeah, good point.
And Brian has copies of a draft budget schedule for you to look at. I'd appreciate you checking out the dates, and we're trying to, to front load it so we have more time for discussion, and I think it worked out pretty well last year, and we're hoping to replicate that, so.
Please.
And Brian's here to go through if there's any questions.
Did you have a presentation?
Brian Henrich, mayor's office. No, I don't, just maybe a couple points to hit upon.
Okay.
Just a reference to PDA, that'll be on the 13th, I think that was at the request of both Kathy and Michael to address that issue early in the process, and then to the mayor's point, there will be a number of departments that will go the following Monday, and you'll notice, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that it's every Monday through the 15th, we've held a budget work session. Those first departments, theoretically anyway, there's not a significant number of changes, and so we anticipate that those conversations will go quickly, and that's why it looks the way that it does.
Okay.
And then I think I would just point out that we did hold December 1st as a discussion hold in the past if there's been items that have gone longer than the days are scheduled, we have some time at the back end to, to cover those topics.
Great, good point, thank you. So I'm going to point out right away that three of these potentially conflict with policy group meetings, Lake Watcom Policy Group meetings. Do we have times assigned to these? Because that's from 1:30 to 3:30 on October 6, November 3, and December 1.
That's a good question. We could, so the short answer is no. In the past, we've, on the off Mondays, we've met at 1 o'clock, and of course, recognize that there's a conflict with the policy group, and so I think what we would look for is, is maybe your guidance on that, we could do it in the morning, or we could convene at, say, 3:30 after that policy group, I mean, whatever. I think the administration's ready to, to do whatever you'd like.
Okay. Yes, Mayor Kelly?
And one more thing, last year, it worked really well, I think, when, when amendments to the budget were presented on the, the budgeting form that we had, and so I request that the council use that same process for this year.
Great. So can we have Brian Henshaw send that to me or Marie fairly soon?
Yeah, he can get it to me, or Brian can get it to Marie.
Great. Which is of the council? Jack or Jean?
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Well, I think in terms of the conflict with the policy group, it seems like maybe 9 or 10 o'clock in the morning, if, if everybody's okay with that.
Doesn't matter to me, I'm all.
As the working girl, can we make it consecutive? So I won't be driving from Deming at 9:00 in the morning, going to work, then coming back to Bellingham. I mean, that, I would just, I see that.
That's fine.
If people don't care, I'd prefer that as well.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That's fine.
I'd much prefer the morning.
Yeah, what do they mean?
Late in the afternoon.
Do you mean afternoon, or do you mean?
Correct, afternoon, so convening at 3:30.
3:30, 4:00, that's fine.
Convening at 3:30 instead of 9:00.
What about 11?
Or before, yeah.
Could we do 11 to 1, and then you'd have a half hour to get your meeting?
Yeah, okay. How about over lunch, if we can eat our lunch in your budget session? You know I'm very committed to lunch.
Yes. That would work good.
Okay.
How about that than the later ones?
So, let's say tentatively 11 to 1 on these days, for these dates, and?
The sixth, the, give me the dates again, the sixth, 11 to 1.
Would this be every Monday we would do 11 to 1?
Just a conflict.
That are not regular meeting Mondays? Or just the days we conflict with the policy group?
We can do what, however you would like, we're happy to.
Does council have a preference?
Might be a good time for all of them.
Okay, so just on the ones that conflict with the policy group, we'll go 11 to 1, that's October 6, November 3, December 1. That's the first Monday of each month, so 11 to 1 on those three meetings.
What was the last one?
December 1.
Bless you.
Okay, and then on regular meeting days, I'm assuming that's a morning session we're looking at?
No, well, we can do, we could do that. In the past, we met after we had accomplished all the other work, so, you know, today is a kind of a good example, we went in the boardroom at 3:00.
Right.
So we could do, that's what we envisioned, we can certainly move that around.
That works. Any preferences? Everyone's okay with that? Okay, so we'll go with that plan for now. Jack, do you want to add something, and then Michael?
Well, just to, just to make sure that we're doing what we want to do, is that on October 27, there's a public hearing that's being proposed on the same day as the rental public hearing. And I'm just a little concerned that one or the other's going to.
Okay.
Do this one. Do this first, it'll go by quickly, no one ever comes.
Well, everybody will come to it, it's just whether to speak to it or not.
Okay, we can work on that.
That's a good point, and I can check with Brian Henshaw as well, I'm not sure how flexible that date is for the, the revenue forecast public hearing.
Okay, let's leave it there for now, just being aware that having that other hearing on rental licensing might be a problem there, and we can talk about that. How about the afternoon work sessions that are not conflicting with the policy group or happening on a regular meeting day? So this is an open Monday, what time? We could still do 11 to 1?
That's fine.
I agree with that, consistency is good. Okay, 11 to 1 on those as well.
11 to 1, 11 to 1.
Okay. Anything else that you need from us?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to report out from the executive session, and then we'll come back to the mayor's This afternoon, we had five items, I believe, yeah. The first was potential property acquisition, staff provided information on a potential property acquisition, and we're taking action tonight. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of real property located in the Lake Watcom watershed at Strawberry Shore Drive, Bellingham, Washington, from Washington Federal, N.A., for $30,000 with an anticipated closing date of September 30, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0 with Councilmember Vargas absent. Next item was litigation, Newland versus Rick Sussi et al. Staff provided information on a litigation matter, direction was given, no action taken. Third item was litigation, Furlan et al. versus Chuckanut Community Forest Park District, Watcom County, Stephen Oliver, and the City of Bellingham. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter, direction was given, no action was taken. The fourth item was canceled, do I still need to read through what that was, Peter? No, okay. Fifth item also canceled, the sixth item was added, and it was potential property acquisition, potential litigation. Staff provided information on a potential property acquisition matter and a potential litigation matter, direction was given, no action was taken. And now we'll go into the mayor's report.
Thank you very much. I'm, we don't usually get out till 10, so does this mean I have a nice long time to?
Yeah, we're expecting a PowerPoint and.
Well, the first thing is, I'd like to acknowledge Ted Carlson's work on the, on the water award that we got today, too. He's a great person for not tooting his own horn, and he rightly gives the credit to his employees, and, but I just think we all need to understand that, you know, he's a good leader for our city, and I appreciate the work he does. Secondly, the, there's going to be a tabletop exercise on oil train derailment, I think you all maybe have heard about that, led by our ECC, Roger Christensen, and the partners will include the Port, the county, and BNSF, and it's to evaluate our ability, I think council's raised this issue, to evaluate our ability to respond to a train derailment. The Watcom Creek Bridge opening is?
Sorry, Mayor, may I ask a question about that? Do you know if that exercise includes a train derailment that would be carrying oil and have oil fire?
Well, it's oil train derailment, so I'm assuming that it would.
It should.
It should, yes, Michael.
I guess we've received notification also about some kind of a follow-up briefing, I think it is, that elected officials were invited to. Does anybody know about that? The second, that's the second one, or what is that?
It's a repeat.
It's a repeat, I thought it was this, well, does anyone know what's happening on the second?
Brian, do you know?
Brian keeps getting up and sitting down. Just let him come over here.
Yes, they're going to, they being the emergency coordination center, is going to have the same format, if you will, for elected officials following this Friday's exercise. I think there was a lot of interest from wide variety of Watcom County elected officials, and so they're going to run through essentially the same process.
Be a dumbed-down version?
They'll use smaller words, yes.
Pretty much, yeah.
Going to put the elected officials on the train.
Yeah, right.
Now I'll go into something really fun, which is Watcom Creek Bridge opening Thursday, September 25 at 5:00. Everybody, public, everyone is in. Everybody, public, everyone is encouraged to bring their bicycles to ride across. And I think we've, I'm excited to see how it turned out. We're developing the legislative agenda again. We start with interest of the council members, and, and this is the joint agenda we have with the Port and the County. If you could send any suggestions you have to Brian, that would be great. We're gonna schedule a work session for October 13th.
By when would you like our suggestions?
Well, the work session's gonna be October 13th, so I guess ASAP.
We should, okay, I'm gonna set a deadline of.
Deadline, Brian?
What day is it today? I'm good with deadlines. It's the 22nd, how about by the 25th, we send you our input? Is that fine?
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
The 25th.
And then, we're assuming that our core request won't be changing, so we're gonna, everything that was on our list before, we're, we're still interested in doing unless there's some desire by the council to make an amendment to that package. Because I think we got it down to pretty core things like public works funding, and transportation package, and revenue sharing for, with the, actually marijuana and liquor sales. Roxanne's checking off her list.
Yeah, right. Got it.
We have mental, we added mental health dollars last year. There's the, I'm trying to think of what else there was. Oh, and obviously, the matka money, so that it doesn't get rated to use for something else besides cleanup. And Brian, is there something else? There's Chris Litten's bill, too.
Marine tourism bill, I'd be happy to send around last year's agenda, then also some emerging ideas, if that would be useful.
Was the medical marijuana reform on that last year?
I don't think it was on it last year. I think we're, the, I just did an interview for City Vision Magazine, and one of the things I said that we'd like to, I'd like to ask the legislature is to kind of consolidate or, what's, what's the word I want?
Harmonize is the word they're using.
Harmonize, that's a good word, Michael.
They're using it.
Oh, okay. I think we did ask that, is that, is that your, your question, or?
Yeah, we need a solution there.
Deal with it.
Yeah.
So that we can.
Right. Deal with it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want it done the same as the regular.
The Association of Washington Cities has recognized that, as has the Washington State Sheriff and Police Chiefs Association. They've both asked for that, so I'm certain we'll be working on the issue.
And they, they have the revenue sharing issue up, too.
Michael?
Why keep calling on him?
Maybe you can, it's the mayor's report.
No, I shouldn't, go ahead.
Would you like commendations for maybe a federal agenda as well? Basically, it's trains again, because part of our effort for some train issues needs to be directed federally. Should we include that?
This is our joint agenda with the Port and County, but include those suggestions, and then we can put together something for our federal elected officials. The plant, the search for a new planning director, planning and community development director, is going well. We have four finalists, and they've been selected for interviews. Interviews are on October 3rd. Jack is representing the council on that, on that panel.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
We're in trouble.
And, and the stakeholder reception is Thursday, October 2nd, from 2:00 to 3:30 in the library lecture room. 2:00 to 3:00. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I can't read. It's October 2nd from 3:30 to 5:00 in the library lecture room. And we have four very interesting, different candidates, and it'll be, I think it'll, it's, it gives the selection panel a really good opportunity to decide how they, they'd like to see the Planning and Community Development Department move forward, so I'm excited, I'm very excited about it. And then Samish Way, we are beginning the condemnation proceedings at the Aloha. Our police emphasis is continuing, and the public health and safety recommendations of the community work group are still moving forward. One of the things that has been very gratifying is, as we've red tagged these rooms, we have been able to find housing for everybody who was displaced. And I think there is still a list through the Watcom Housing Program, Watcom County Housing Program, and others, so that we're not, so innocent victims, as we take these actions, are not going to be displaced and become homeless. And with that, I have one action I'd like you to take, and that is to reappoint Bill Dubai for the MNC commission.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, six, zero, with Councilmember Vargas absent.
Actually, that's not a vote, that's information.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Oh, look at that.
MNC, we don't usually vote.
I know you don't.
I was just gonna check.
We really felt strongly that that person should be put to MNC.
Make it a resolution.
I'll make it a resolution next time, thanks.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for supporting him anyway.
Exciting news about the Aloha motel on Samish this afternoon, thanks for getting that press release out so quickly.
See home neighbors, and Samish neighborhoods will be very happy to hear that it's moving forward.
And I think, you know, we had discussed the fact that we want to make sure if we move forward on something, that we're going to be able to follow through. But hopefully, this will make it easier if we have other facilities up there that are out of compliance with the law.
I hope they take notice and shape up quickly.
Yeah, you're here.
Yes.
Anyway, thank you, council.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda passes, six, zero, with Councilmember Vargas absent.
Only one.